Dennis.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight at seven o'clock. If everyone could stand, the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with Gloria Williams in the moment of inspiration.
Good evening, everyone. Am I gonna get that in? Testing. I'm muted. Hello? Testing. Oh, you think so? Testing. Is that better? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Someone once said that the everyday life you live is the legacy you have. People look at the trail you have walked, the life journey we are on, and see a legacy. Our life stories are like a river that draws you along on its current. While you can't quite see beyond the bend, looking back is rich with stories. Tonight, we want to pay tribute to three fellow board members that have been a positive influence in Warren Township. Since I have been on the board these last four years, I have had the privilege of working with dedicated and committed board members. When I look at our board, it reminds me of a puzzle where each piece is unique and is needed to complete the puzzle. Each of our Warren Township board members, along with the superintendent, brings a unique talent. As I reflect over my previous four years, I want to recognize some key people that have been an important piece of that puzzle. First, we want to just give tribute to Tony Mendez, which was one of our former board members, who was a hardworking and essential part of the board. He was dedicated to voting on key components that was beneficial to our entire Warren Township community. Next, we have Lynn Matchin, who was elected to the board in 2016. Since then, she has been a strong advocate for all of the great things we are doing in Warren. She has been a dedicated and valuable board member who has shown commitment and dedication. Thank you, Lynn, for your hard work. Then, we have Randy George, who has served on the board for several years. Recently, he overcame a serious accident while performing community service. In the midst of his personal dilemma, he continued to virtually attend meetings and contribute to the ongoing demands of the board. Great job, Randy. To all of you, your passion is a quality that cannot be learned and an ability which cannot be taught. Thank you for being an important piece of the puzzle here at Warren Township. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gloria. Dr. Hanson, we're gonna give you the difficult task of following that.
Yes. Well, well said, Gloria. Well said.
Thank you.
Really wanna highlight a couple of things this evening. One, just, I'd like to express my gratitude to those that are in this room, our cabinet, our board, to all of our staff, and our students, and our families. It's been a challenging first semester. Everything we've done has been worth it. It has not been perfect, but we have tried very hard to provide the safest environment for our students and staff. And I'm just extremely grateful for getting us to today. Couple of years ago, we asked the board to approve jury of a graduate. And during that time, we had no idea that a couple of years later, we would be going through a pandemic. And later this evening, you're gonna hear a report on jog. And I just wanna emphasize that the jog skills that we created are never more important than they are right now. With that, one of the other things that we highlighted last year, and I invited a couple of guests as part of my report tonight, we were one of the founding districts in the state to adopt the HSE pilot program that really targeted seniors who were credit deficient so that we would have one more opportunity to try to get them to the finish line. And I'm really excited to share tonight with Ms. Natalie Ruder, our Adult Education Director, and Gary Hollenquest to share his success with us. Mrs. Ruder, are you on the screen?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you.
Hanson. It is my pleasure to introduce Gary Hollenquest to all of you. He would like to share a little bit with you, to share with you his background, just so everybody has a greater understanding of where he came from and the various challenges that he faced in earning credits to receive his high school diploma. And then he's also going to share with everybody his experience with the HSE pilot and how it has opened up opportunities for him.
Well, how are y'all doing today? So... I look at this school, or this whole school system, or the, you know, just the obstacles I had to come over to get to this point where I'm at. They were actually very challenging. They were very tough to overcome. I was, um... Back in the fourth grade, this is about where my troubles began in school. Back in like, fourth grade, my mother had passed away. And it was a, it was a very tragic loss. It was, it was very tough for me. And that, it, it kinda just had like, put a stop on me. But... But yeah, so, it just put a stop to me for a minute. And it really, it really just affected me in a way that just... It's just a confusing thing. But anyway, this, this program's been so much for me. Yeah, so, I'm sorry about that, guys. But, uh, after fourth grade, what happened, I shut down. I, I just didn't wanna do anything. Didn't wanna go to school no more. It was, it was, it was just tough for me. It was actually, it was just tough for me. And... My grandmother was there for me to just, to lead me back on the right track, back in school. And she pushed me towards this program. And this program is, it means so much to me that I could actually have, you know, a better future for myself through Ms. Natalie and Ms. Eileen over here. And just all the teachers and all the administrators, they just helped me. Just helped me through, you know, just through the tough times that I had. It was never easy for me, coming, just coming to the school. And it was, it was just very hard for me. Yeah.
Thank you, Gary. And I, I just wanna jump in for just a second and just talk a little bit about Gary. His resilience, he, he gave you a quick overview, but he is one of the most resilient young men I've ever met. He has overcome more than any of us can probably imagine. And he's come out on the other side as an extremely dedicated young man who has big goals for himself. And he came in the class, he worked so hard. He was a model student to all of the other students who also, to join this program, Gary came in with 11 credits. But he came in fully engaged to this program. He worked so hard. He earned his HSE. And now, he's going to join the welding program and get his welding certification. So, we couldn't be more proud of the opportunities this pilot program that Dr. Hanson advocated for has allowed to create multiple pathways for student success. So, thank you, Dr. Hanson.
Could we have Gary come back into the screen real quick? Gary, I know we, we've talked on the phone, and you sent me a message. And I, I just wanna say, you know, face to face, how proud I am of you and look forward to meeting you someday. And I know the board here, and those that are watching, are also proud of you. And I just wanna recognize and give you a, an applause, okay?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jerry.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
Smile too. Ms. Natalie, just real quick, how many students do we have currently in that program?
We currently have 11 students enrolled in the program, and seven students have completed the program and are now enrolled in the adult education training programs. So, they're working towards CDLs, CNAs, welding, paraprofessional.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks for your good work.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. With that, we will move on to board comments, starting with Terry.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. First of all, Gloria, thank you for your inspirational moment. Randy and Lynn, it's been an honor to serve on the board with you. Both of you have brought so much to Warren, to our community, to all the different areas you've touched. I know that the Arts and Education Foundation really bloomed, and that was very dear to you. Randy, I know the high school and all your history there, and really trying to bring back the Warren pride to many of you all. Gary, what a great job and what a good testament of what we have going on at Warren. I'm just gonna keep it short and just say, welcome, everyone, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you, Terry. Julie. Welcome, everybody, and Merry Christmas, everybody. Lynn and Randy. I've enjoyed every minute with you guys, and I'm not going to... I wrote stuff to you in the cards. Anyway, everybody, I hope you get, take time for yourself, get some rest, and come back rejuvenated for another exciting semester to tackle, I guess. Thank you. Lynn?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that really nice inspirational moment, Gloria. I can't see you through that beautiful points set, but thank you. Thank you. I know you're sitting over there. I, I think I'll go ahead and give comments to everybody right now. I was just starting to kinda get used to talking in front of everybody.
Go right ahead, I did.
But I just want everybody here to know, and people that I can't see on our screens right now, that I really loved... It really meant a lot to me. And I'm really gonna miss that. So, thank you so much for the opportunity and just, um... Just really enjoyed all of it, even the good times and the more difficult, challenging times. So, really proud and grateful for the missions that I've made the last four years, working with all the board members and the two superintendents. So, I'll continue helping children with my husband, Dr. Chad, and our Healthy Smiles Program, which everybody knows we're so dedicated and passionate about. And then also through the Warren Arts and Education Foundation, as they have honored and elected me to be their president for this next coming year. So, I'm so excited to continue my passionate work with the foundation. And lastly, you know, at this point, I'd just like to thank my mom and my two boys, Drew and Will, for always being my cheerleaders. And to my best friend in the whole world, my husband Chad, who's so supportive me from day one when I said I wanted to do this. And he's here with me to the, to the very end. So, just thank you to everyone. And I'll still kinda have you around, just in a different, in a different way. So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Lynn. Randy?
All right. Can you hear me, everybody? Thanks. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate everything everybody's done this year. And I hope you can hear me in this mask. It's really weird, but we gotta do it. I told Tim today, it was bitterly... I talked to him today. I said, after, you know, 96 meetings, I wanna call him, talk to him. I said, please call me back. It just feels good. And it was my last one. 96 board meetings. But Michelle's out there too. She's a true friend. Good to see you, Michelle. And everybody on this board, you guys are gonna be lifelong friends of mine. I, I was thinking, I started in the school system back in 1970. Went to Heather Hills Elementary School back then and walked to school, the afternoon kindergarten class. Amazing. Then I also had, excuse me, I had, I graduated in 82 from Warren Central. My, both my brothers graduated from Warren. Dave Holt's a schoolmate of my brother Jeff's. And Shepler and I went to spring breaks together in high school, Rich Shepler and I, and got a lot of memories here, great memories. 50-plus years in the system, in and out of here. And we moved back here back in 1996, and I've enjoyed every, every minute of it. It's been, it's been wonderful. It was a privilege and an honor to, to serve everybody here, the whole township. And you guys are all true friends, you'll be lifelong friends of mine. All four of my kids graduated from Warren Central too, and I was able to have the privilege to give them their diplomas. It was a wonderful experience. Three of the four. The fourth one was 2003 when he graduated. So, again, thanks again. We'll talk to you again.
Thank you, Randy. Gloria?
I would just like to say, have a Merry Christmas. And this is the time where you can try to get some rest here.
Okay, I would like to say Merry Christmas. And this is the time that everyone needs to get much-needed rest. So, don't neglect yourself. Yourself is very, very important. Take care of yourself during this holiday period. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Gloria. Michelle?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. And Randy and Lynn, you guys are going to be greatly missed. And you were great board members. Put your hearts into it. Thank you for everything that you've done. I wish you both well. And to all of the administrators and teachers, thank you for everything you're doing. You guys are amazing. Warren Township kids, couldn't ask for any better. You guys are awesome. And welcome to the new board members.
Thank you, Michelle. So, that leaves me with a lot of feedback. So, Randy, we're with you. It's been six years together, which is great. Obviously, I asked for a quality Heather Hills preschool kindergarten class because the AM class was the important one, which I also thought to be proud of every day. I was joking with my children, people really did. Your mother did. And it's, it has always been nice to have someone who celebrated holidays this year. And someone who went to the same schools that I did, sitting on the board. So, I will miss you a lot. But as you said, we have a lot of mutual friends. She said that you were a truly wonderful woman, and you were. So, it's just been, it's been a real honor serving with you these past two years. So, thank you for everything. To our staff and administrators, by my clock, we have less than 40 hours left. I know that this has been the most difficult semester that probably anyone has ever experienced. And to be quite frank, the last spring, I bet you didn't think that was a bar we could hit. And yet, we managed to. Warren will really is our motto. We, and we have, which is also very, very important. To echo what everyone else has said, if you celebrate holidays, celebrate them. Tell your loved ones you love them. Tell your loved ones you love them. Otherwise, just take time to de-stress. I think if all of us have collectively learned anything, it is that stress really is a danger and that you do need to take that time to decompress and just walk away for a little bit. There really is no shame in it. That is why this break exists. So, thank you for everything you have done. We do truly, truly appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to ask Julie if we have any yellow cards.
No comments.
We have no comments. And so, with that, we are going to go to the spotlight.
It's all red. Testing. Testing. When Randy and I talked today, all right. Try, try a different opening. When Randy and I talked today, I, I said, I'm looking forward to seeing him because I have not seen him in person, and seen you in person in quite a while. But I was not looking forward to what, why I was going to see him. And Randy, I've known you for a long time. So, on a personal level, I'm sad to see you go, but I'm also happy that I got to work with you in many different fashions, as a principal, to Caitlin, assistant superintendent, and superintendent. Thank you for taking a chance on me as a superintendent. Thank you for your service and your leadership in Warren Township. I, I think a testament to any leadership is leaving it better than when you came. And you are certainly leaving Warren in a better place. And I know this isn't the end of our relationship with Warren. I know you'll continue to be a champion for Warren, students and schools and our community. 50 years, you know?
Oh, man.
Bleeding black and gold. So, on behalf of the district, on behalf of our community, I'd like to present you with this plaque that recognizes your leadership from January 2013 to December 2020. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. I would love to smile right now. I'm smiling underneath this.
Sure.
Thanks again, Tim. Thank you, all of you, Warren Township. I did know in the introduction there, when we were doing the board comments, if I was gonna talk then or now, I had a little speech prepared. But basically, in a nutshell, very honored, privileged to serve the township, the community, the last eight years. Looking out here, Ryan, Brian, Pam, I don't wanna forget anybody, Allison, Kim, my friends here, all the relationships have been unbelievable. Kent, Dave out there, I mean, everybody, it's, it's been wonderful. Like Tim said, when I came here, it was really good. It's really, really good now. And it, Warren Township is the place. It's just class, the, the Warren, the W, the warrior, just coming to games, coming around people, the township, the cabinet, everybody, you guys do such a great job. And like Tim said, I, I came here and it was good. I've just helped. I've served and, and brought opinions, like somebody said, I think Terry did. You know, my motto when I came in, I worked with Clayton and some of the guys, I'm bringing the spirit back. Because I was here in 1982, and then my brothers were here, '80 and '86. And like I said, my kid's 2003, 2003 on, my other three. But it was just great. It's still, still really great. And it's been an honor. I, I feel good about it. Board members, I mean, I discussed with Julie and everybody during the campaign and everything. It was really time. I mean, eight years was great. And to go on, I even shared with Kim, Tim, Gloria, everybody, Rachel, Lynn on the phone, Terry, that during all that, I went to my wife, when, you know, the scoreboard, all that was there, I said, I won't lose a minute of sleep tonight. And I was down, you know, I was down. I really, I, I've enjoyed every minute of it. And, you know, now it's everybody else's turn. So, thanks again. Warren will keep rolling. The Warriors, go Warriors. And been very honored, very blessed. Thanks.
Wasn't looking forward to this speech either. Lynn, I've known you for a long time, since our days at Brookview. And you serving, you've served our community for a long time, you and your husband and your family. We are also in a better place due, because of your leadership. You've been a true champion for all of our students, all of our schools, our community. This is hard because you are a Ben Davis grad. But you, you adopted Warren, just like you were a graduate of Warren. And I know how much this has meant to you, and I know how disappointed you are. And we talked about not-yets or something to come down the road. So, I hope you'll continue, I know you'll continue to stay connected. And I look forward to working with you in other forms and fashion. On behalf of the district and the, and the school board, I'd like to recognize you for your leadership from January 2017 to December 2020, and serving as a board member. Thank you.
I'll be so short and sweet, you know, I don't like to say too much. But just again, thank you, everybody, for always being so kind and answering all my questions. And all my, poor Allison had to suffer through all my punctuation and going through proofreading. I just really love Warren. It's done a lot of great things for me. And if somebody would have told me a long time ago that I would have had the chance to be a school board member for such an outstanding school corporation, I would have definitely thought they were crazy. So really an honor to have been given this opportunity. And I definitely continue, will look forward to continue working with everybody here. So thank you, everyone.
Once again, thank you so much, Dr. Hanson and Lynn and Randy. We appreciate it. We're going to take a sharp turn and go to our consent agenda. This month, the consent agenda consists of approval of minutes, financial reports, payroll claims, claim register, and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, the human resources report, permission to accept gifts and grants, and change orders. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Randy made the motion and Lynn seconded it. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm yay. It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to our reports this evening. We will begin with Dr. Hanson and our alternatives to a full reopen.
Man muted. Good evening, board. Just, this is just a reminder from our work session on Monday. Basically, it's a summary of what we approved for our Semester Two reopening learning plan. Just a reminder that our K-5 students will continue to follow their 100% virtual schedule through February, I'm sorry, Friday, January 15th, with a tentative return to in-person on Tuesday, January 19th with a virtual option. We are continuing to offer the virtual option. That request window will open on December 30th and will close on January 8th. Once we return, the in-person will be five days a week. And our virtual model will continue to be a combination of instructional days, what we call it, application days. And then our Fridays are enrichment days. Sixth through eighth grade will remain 100% virtual through Friday, February 12th, with a tentative to return to a hybrid in-person and a virtual option on Wednesday, February 17th. If you remember, February 16th is a district scheduled e-learning day. That request window will open on January 15th and will close on the 29th at 4:00 PM. While we're in the virtual window, our students will receive synchronous or live instruction on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, with Tuesdays and Thursdays being application days. And if you remember, Ryan shared with the board and us this learning hub concept where we will bring in students to support them. Once we return, we will still operate on a black and gold schedule. And the virtual instruction will be a combination of instructional days and application days. Really, ninth through 12th grade is the same as sixth through eighth. Really, the only difference there is we've already opened that request window. That happened in November, so our families had already selected their option. We are responding to family needs as those are presented. But there will not be a second window for ninth through 12th. Really, I just bring that to you again for a summary. It was communicated with our staff yesterday. We heard very little feedback, positive or negative, which is good. I think mostly folks were expecting something similar. And then it was shared with our parents and students this afternoon. So we'll see what feedback we get on that. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Seeing none. Considering we had a two-hour board meeting on Monday, that makes sense. We are going to move on to Mr. Russell and investing in the future of our graduate, a JOG update.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out. There we go. Sorry about that.
Okay, we're good? Hello? Alright. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to provide an update on one of our strategic plan focus areas, investing in the future of our graduates. Many of you know this concept, for this is not new. Dr. Hanson alluded to the importance of this work. He doesn't, well, he probably knows, but he may not know. But he actually stole my punchline at the end, as far as the importance more now than ever. But that's okay. I'll still go on. As you know, specific to board goals, offer high-quality student programming in order to prepare our students for the development and journey of a graduate. We've seen this image. We know the six skills or dispositions, critical thinking, communication, resilience, citizenship, content knowledge, and collaboration. Those are essential to obviously what we want students to be able, the skills and dispositions we want them to possess to be successful, not only as a kindergartner, as a 12th grader, but probably most importantly, post-K-12 education, so they can be successful members of society. That journey starts the second they enter. Pre-K, in some cases, maybe even daycare before pre-K, as we look at that. I want to call out specific to the strategic plan. Obviously, the intentionality behind that. We listed five specific areas of success and five specific strategies along that. I'm going to spend most of my time tonight reviewing our journey, no pun intended, of a graduate to a graduate. And then hone in on specific about grade-level expectations and then developing systems and expectations around JOG, more specifically within that context. What you're looking at now, I put this in here just because we have something called a JOG leadership team developed of building leaders, people out in buildings and other people within this office that kind of work on a high level of planning to provide opportunities for teachers. And as we're going through this work, to best illustrate a timeline of kind of what JOG was and where it's going, this timeline was developed. That gold line that you see going through the center, you may think it was COVID. It is, however, that's when we released this timeline to provide the last update. I kid you not, the Friday before the infamous week of, I don't know what the date was, I know what March 12th was, but that Friday before, we developed this timeline to illustrate where we were on the journey to staff. As you can see, the JOG design team, and we're going to go through some of these components, but that JOG design team, you know, we started developing, or I should say, Dr. Hanson started developing that JOG design team earlier on. I know many of you were part of that. We had a lot of critical conversations. And then at the center of that is, was what if? What could education really look like if we got rid of all the distractions? And we really just focused on what our students need, what values we had as a community, and what we wanted our students to be successful. And out of that was birth JOG. JOG leadership teams were developed. We went through a specific process called JOG connects, where we really, it was our opportunity as central office administrators to sit down with every single certified staff member in the district to talk about why JOG, to develop future hopes and aspirations about our students and with our teachers to talk about what that could look like, to recognize the work that's already taking place, and to certainly challenge the thought process of school is more than a test score. School is more than just simply a standardized test. Now, I always said with that caveat, we have to take the test, right? We're not thumbing our nose to the feds or any of the people at the state level. But at the same time, when we think about our most critical moment in our education as a child, most, no one we talked to ever said, it was the first time I took I-Stop. Or the first time they switched the test to iLearn or anything like that. They fundamentally talked about a deep relationship they had with an educator and how that educator inspired them to go on to either their future profession, to persevere. I think we saw an excellent example of that tonight with the HSE program. It's just for how that JOG disposition of resilience far outweighed any other academic content skill that that young man could possess, not because he doesn't have those, but because that was his critical skill to his success. JOG was infused deeply into strategic planning. Obviously, it was a fundamental element, which obviously created one of the focus areas. And then I'm going through this, I'll go through a lot of this in more detail. But that gold line represents, obviously, when this timeline was released. And it just so happened represents the March 12th timeframe as well. That being said, we hit some challenges between the gold and the red lines. But I'm here to talk about the resilience between those challenges as well and the opportunities that we continue to create for the future success for our students with JOG. As I mentioned, JOG Connect 1.0. This was the, we love the term one-pager. This was the famous one-pager that every single staff member had. This was the front page of the one-pager. And I call it out because the 2019 kindergarten class was a class of 2032. And I don't know if any of you specifically remember, but we said, what if? What could school be? Forget everything you know about school and what do we want? And some of these graphic illustrations demonstrate just some of the thoughts and ideas that we had around those. We absolutely, we mimic those activities with staffs or with our staff, our teachers. And again, proud to say that we were able to have that unique individual conversation with every single one of our students, or not students, staff members. Needless to say, JOG represents a promise to our students and our community that we're here to prepare them for beyond K-12. It's not just about what they do within these walls, but it's to prepare them for the skills, to gain the skills, have the knowledge in those dispositions to be able to be successful in the future. Very fond memories of JOG Connect 1.0. The JOG dispositions and descriptors. We all have dictionaries, but I think one of the, one of the first tasks of the JOG leadership team was they actually create definitions for those terms. We play a game, right? Everyone write down the definition of collaboration. Well, there's a lot of different definitions of collaboration, even if you Google it. And what we specifically wanted to do was to provide a baseline, universal idea of what each of these dispositions and skills meant with some underlying components as far as what we think needs to be infused for those. These aren't specific expectations. Those expectations need to be drawn out a little bit more in more detail and more grade-level appropriate for all grades. But last year, this was a critical aspect last fall. This was a critical aspect of JOG leadership team. Continue to add layers of context. In that context, with every new conversation builds new understanding. And with new understanding, future support can be developed. How that's integrated into our current work. As you know, we have curriculum for all grades, all content. And one of the first open-door opportunities or front-door opportunities we saw to connect with JOG was to infuse JOG dispositions within our curriculum maps. We simply wanted to call these out to action, knowing that there's two examples, and I can flip back and forth. I think you see there's a seventh-grade math and just a fourth-grade reading one, where we were intentional about making sure that we called out by name the JOG dispositions that were actually addressed or teachers should be thinking about providing unique opportunities and addressing through each curriculum opportunity. Now, I'll be the first to tell you, this alone doesn't satisfy JOG requirements. However, I do see it as a first step to specifically using the language, the nomenclature, to make sure that we're keeping this front and center for our teachers. And when you keep it front and center for your teachers, we've encouraged them as a first step to use that language. We've had a very similar conversation in years past about the language in core. We frequently talked and reflected upon here lately about just the idea of back in, I forget what year it was, it's probably around 2010-ish, or no, 2013-ish. Could a kindergarten, kindergarten student realistically know what the word civility meant? Well, in 2020, they do. And a lot of that's because the intentionality of the language. Allison Woods reminded us today in a meeting about something totally separate that just showing a student or telling a student doesn't do much. We have to teach a student what everything means. And as we've been very intentional about teaching civility to kindergartners, has bared fruit. And that same fruit, we would expect probably a new variety of fruit, but that same fruit, we'd expect when we're intentional about teaching students the language and the expectations around JOG. So to that point, they're infused within the curriculum as not only a talking point, but I would call it more as a focus point, so that teachers know that those dispositions are specifically in there for everyone to see. Specifically, our work right now, with the JOG leadership team that I meet with, as we review the strategic plan and as I've set my own professional goals for this year, along with Dr. Hanson, one of the key components and what I see as the next logical step in the progression of JOG is to really achieve this measure of success in the strategic plan that says all students will meet grade-level expectations of the journey of the graduate. You have to have grade-level expectations to be able to meet them. So we've been diving deep into some resources that we know, that I'll give you a snapshot into those specifically. And then more specifically, with that strategy that matches with the measure of success is develop systems and expectations that ensure JOG's a critical aspect of everything we do. So the work right now with the JOG leadership team really focuses on review of specific expectations that are out there for other, either sister or brother districts that have either a similar process or that are working. As you know, we're part of an organization formerly called EdLeader 21, now called Patel for Kids, that we get the opportunity and the ability, not only to share resources, collect resources from others, and learn from some leaders in this field nationwide. So what we're currently doing is what we know is these organizations have developed rubrics around some of our dispositions, some of those being collaboration, critical thinking, and communication. Now, these rubrics are not something that we would carve and copy. These rubrics are ones that we're reviewing and starting to develop processes to get more explicit teacher feedback on those. Because really what we envision is that every student should clearly understand what they need to do to achieve JOG. We're in complete, the beauty of JOG is we're in control of the process. The challenge of JOG is we're in complete control of the process. So I look at that personally as a glass half-full. We leverage the resources that others provide to us and that we're able to glean from others and some of these professional organizations. But at the same time, as I mentioned before, these aren't simply, what I copied and pasted on there was just short sections of, I believe, a collaboration and a critical thinking rubric that was developed in other areas. So what does that step look like? Right now, our focus specifically is looking at expectations at the fourth-grade level, the eighth-grade level, and the 12th-grade level. We believe that with our current structure of K-4, We believe that with our current structure of K-4, 5'8", and obviously a high school setup, that starting to develop those structures that what we believe students can achieve with those six dispositions, by the time they leave elementary school, going into intermediate, by the time they leave middle school, going into high school, and by the time they graduate is our starting point. Those starting points and what we realize is we have to be able to not only teach these skills, but to provide appropriate feedback around these skills. So until we can develop the expectations around them, that will help us solidify the specific teaching points. And I will say probably just as important, the other opportunities. I could stand up here and tell you a lot of dreams I have about jog. And I'll allow myself to do that for just a short moment before I get, well, let me start. I believe jog needs to be represented on all student reporting. I believe that right now our report cards represent content knowledge. Our report cards don't necessarily represent resilience. Our report cards don't represent communication skills. Our report cards don't necessarily represent critical thinking. Now, you can argue that some of those are infused, but to call specific points of action and specific points that students and teachers need to be successful in this process, I believe that we need to be able to report on students' progress on these skills. More importantly, I think students need to be able to have the knowledge to self-assess their own skills in these areas as well. Now, I'm not standing here tonight telling you that on the report card students will have available to them on Friday, you'll see jog feedback. But what I am telling you is that as we look at truly making this, going back to, let me reverse, systems and expectations that ensure jog is a critical aspect of all we do, we owe it to provide feedback and instruction to students on these areas. And right now, that's just something that's not baked into our system. So would we looking for opportunities around that once we create those expectations? We have future aspirations of creating a specific diploma type called distinguished jog scholar. We have aspirations of making sure that our honor roll systems reflect jog. We have aspirations to ensure that our students are provided just as much feedback about their resiliency as they are their reading level. Granted, this doesn't exist in very many places, if any. However, this is the commitment we made to students and our community when we adopted jog and as we infused it into our strategic plan. This is where Dr. Hanson stole my thunder. I've been asked by just nearly almost every principal, many a staff, how can we continue to push forward with jog when we're teaching in a pandemic? And I understand that question on the surface level. We all have alluded to just the challenges over the past nine months, 10 months, however long it's been now feels for much longer. But the thunder part of that was how has COVID-19 emphasized the purpose of jog? Some of the most critical things that we're dealing with and trying to help students be successful, motivate and encourage them, focus around these specific dispositions. Some of the most significant challenges that our students face now is about demonstrating some of these skills, because that's reflected in the academic content that I know and their success that they're doing from an academic achievement point of view. But as those systems and expectations, opportunities to learn, opportunities to instruct are developed, at the fundamental purpose of jog provides the opportunity to help support students through, I don't want to say the next pandemic, because that sounds absolutely horrifying, but through whatever life's going to bring them. When we think about our success as a district and what we've done over the past 10 months, each single one, every single one of us in this room has had to draw out their inner jog in order to provide the safety, the certainty and security for our community. Every single one of us had to use all these skills in order to provide the best learning environment for students. And these are the same skills we want our students sitting up at this board table one day to be able to do as well. We've had a lot of opportunities to develop these, and it's our charge to make sure that we develop our instructional academic in every system, as our strategic plan says, around those, so our students can provide that same contribution one day. Be happy to answer any questions?
I like that idea about what you said about adding those content areas up in the report cards. Maybe if the teacher could just, you know, check, just put the check marks, you know, under, you know, high, low, or something like that. Give them an indicator of how they're doing in each one of those areas, just checking on.
The indicator is it's a, it's a journey, right? And again, not a pun on words, but we don't expect everyone to be highly proficient in resiliency just because they walked in a door. But we want to provide them the opportunity of teaching them what that looks like and letting them know. I have stronger skills in some of these areas than I do in others, and that's okay. But what I require, what I would want to require as a student is someone to give me the feedback on what I can do to be a better critical thinker, if that's an area of need for me, and to provide me appropriate feedback and praise as far as maybe how I am as a citizen or in terms of communication. We have to report those. I think we have to formalize that. And that's a process, but at the same time, it's a process we're looking forward to. And it's a process that no pandemic's going to stop. And it's important. It's a challenge, as Julie's mentioned, but it's certainly important. And if we really want to set ourselves apart, like I know we want to, there's some critical work ahead, and I'm excited to lead it. Absolutely. We're looking into that with a lot more detail. One thing that we're being cautious about is not tying jog to any one other popular educational term. So I don't want people to believe jog just represents project-based learning, although project-based learning could be a component of that, as you mentioned. Sometimes as educators, we flock towards fancy terms and we start to define them. Jog's unique to Warren, and we're going to create it, we're going to create a foundation for it. And at the same time, the other thing that jog represents is our commitment to allow everyone in this organization to have a level of autonomy within jog as well. We can create expectations and still let our professionals find the best way to meet those. It's that balance of autonomy versus structure that we're working on, but absolutely. And that's, that's key.
And that autonomy builds ownership. So that will be great.
Thank you so much, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
And with that, I will bring up Mr. Holt to discuss investing in efficiencies and control project update. And they should have that ability.
Dr. Hanson, President Burke, members of the board. As Ryan said, we're all practicing, practicing our jog. I'm practicing my resilience to just get around every day. Thank you for the opportunity. It's been a few months since we've had been able to update you and share some exciting things going on with our facilities. Tonight, we kind of are going to blend a couple of things together. We're going to talk to you about where are we with Lowell and Warren Central High School Phase 1. Then we're going to also introduce, as we're blending in design for Phase 2, and we're kind of overlapping some time right now. So CSO will then go over kind of what we're looking at for the next, next round of construction. And at the end, there's a surprise and something that we're really excited about that Skilman and CSO would like to share with you with Dr. Rogers. So at this time, Mr. Landfair, if you would like to request and share your screen, we will give an update on where we are with Lowell and Warren Central High School.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you. On behalf of the Skilman team, thank you for having us here this evening. I want to mention that I've been joined by several of our team, Brad Skilman, Tony Heath, our senior project manager. I think you've seen a couple of other presentations. I got other, a couple of other guests that we're going to introduce at the end. Mr. David Yancey and, and Ms. Tanisha Smith. And David is an executive in training and Tanisha is an internship with us right now. So as David said, we would like to, excuse me. Give you a little bit of update on Lowell and the first phase of Warren Central. Believe it or not, we're in our 16th month of construction at Lowell, which is about measuring, start to finish, about 60% way through the project and timeline. That doesn't necessarily represent the amount of work or the volume of dollars spent, but it is kind of a measuring point for us. If you recall, as we all know, this building is occupied, that we have a detailed phasing plan in order to accomplish the construction. This is, represents that plan, and each one of those colors represents a different phase. We're closing in on the completion of a very important first phase, and that is the new addition shaded there in gray. And our hope and plans are to turn that over in January after first of the year. And we're also a near completion on what we call Phase 2, or that first phase of classroom renovations there in the light blue shade. And we're already making plans to move from the light blue into the greens or the Phase 3 of classroom renovations. That's where we are in terms of location and timeline. We've also been, we're doing a lot of work on the site. I've got about 27 slides. I'm not going to read them to you. This is sort of a document that the district can post, but I'll just highlight some important aspects. We've made a lot of accomplishments here in the last few weeks in the site work to have important piece to that is the paving in the north side of the building and critical site lighting and pavement and sidewalks is such complete. As I said, we're moving close to the completion of that building addition, so we've completed our building enclosure items. And important, a couple of points there is that the new addition includes a brand new mechanical electrical room that will serve the building when we're complete, so new boilers and chillers. And the last item there is equally important as we received, to deliver the kitchen equipment. And you'll receive a whole new food service and kitchen and cafeteria area in the new addition. As I mentioned, we've started our first phase of classroom renovations, and we've got those enclosed. And we've received, for example, caseworks, so we're working on finishes in that area. Some photographs for you. The north parking lot was paved, I believe it was the end of last week. We've got some outdoor concrete. You see the brick enclosure there for the maestery, maestery wall, screen wall. You know, window walls for, it'll be some really nice large window walls to bring in natural light into the, into the areas. You see the gymnasium, that's the north windows in the gymnasium are completely enclosed. You see the level of finishes and lighting and paint in the gym. Some of those practical things, mechanical mezzanine, mechanical equipment is installed, and the elevator has been installed. So as, to serve the two-story portion of the addition. And as I said, the kitchen prep area, you see it's pretty much ready for, to delivery installation of mechanical equipment. The next 90 days, well, of course, we want to complete the building addition and those critical pieces of the site work that serve that building addition. I highlighted the water main connection because that's a sort of our last critical infrastructure piece. And as you might, we've overcome a lot of challenges in this project, and this may be one of our last big challenges is just working with you know, those local jurisdictions and agencies that provide utilities. So we're hopeful to get that water connection made, and that'll be a kind of the last major component of infrastructure. And of course, in terms of the building addition, lots of final touches will be going in over the next 30, 45, 60 days. Building renovations, as I said, will be finishing Phase 2 classrooms and be very far into Phase 3 classrooms. If we're, I have an opportunity to present to the board in 90 days around April, I think we'll be very close, if not already turned over that next phase of classrooms. At Warren Central High School, believe it or not, we're in our fourth month of construction at Warren Central High School, a little over a quarter of the way through. We made great progress. This is just a diagram that we've used to organize our work activities with the 16th Street side of the campus on the bottom of the screen and 18th Street, the football stadium on the top of the building. So as you work clockwise, we've been working from the southeast around to the west and northwest corner. That's our sequence of activities. So the blue is our first phase, Phase A, and then we will be moving next spring into our second phase, the purple area, with a sort of an intermediate phase of the roundabout next summer. So lots and lots of underground, things under the ground that are critical to the infrastructure and the drainage of the site, what will be covered up when we're done, are well into progress. On terms of the buildings, additions and renovations, we're in the first Phase A is the renovations of the performing arts area, and we're well into those. And then our transition will be when they're complete next spring, that we will start the building additions on the west side, obviously timed to overlap the time in which we're working on the site on the west side, as the south side of the building, the 16th Street side of the site will be complete. Like I said, we've made a lot of good progress on the site in that Phase A, and we are, we have paved a critical component of that, the southeast parking lot, which I know Mr. Shepler was excited to have turned over to him for their use. We've made great progress in the performing arts area, made good, good in terms of demolition, finishes, lighting. I have some pictures here. Just good, great progress on both parts of Phase A. There's the parking lot, as I mentioned, curbs and walks to door 40. An important asset to this project was getting a new walk along 16th Street, which has been poured and installed. Like I mentioned, some of that critical underground drainage is going in for the multipurpose field, which has started now, and that'll be part of that final part of the Phase A. So I mentioned the band room, we're putting, putting, putting finishes in. You see the ceiling grid and lighting going in, painting for the band room, finishes in the choir area, and those improvements and updates along those quarters serve on either side of that performing arts area are starting to be complete. In the next 90 days, we will complete the underground drainage system for the multipurpose field. We'll make a, we'll be completing all the drainage for Phase A. We'll have finished the curbed walks and pavement for that bus parking lot. So essentially, that Phase A along 16th Street will be complete. We will also complete the performing arts renovations in, plan to do in March, and we'll have started into the building additions of door 18, 21, and the Hall of Fame additions, and well into selective demolition and foundations. With that, that's, that's our presentation on the update for construction. I could pause here and ask if the board has any questions for us on that progress.
You know, from a Phase 1 perspective, I've been very pleased with the progress. As Victor said earlier, there's always challenges whenever you get into a project, especially renovation, because you're just not really sure what could be behind a wall or ceiling. And I'm very proud of the professionals and the team, how we've been able to adapt, and really, everything that's, that's within our control. You know, knock on wood, we've been able to really work very well. I mean, our challenges have been those things that are out of our control, which are permits, obtaining things from the city of Indianapolis. And I understand that, you know, their, their process has changed a lot as well with COVID. So, you know, we're learning and we're making adjustments as we, as we start to talk about Phase 2. You know, we're building some of those challenges. You know, we're building some of those challenges into our timelines. Those were things that we didn't anticipate with getting approvals and drainage. And, you know, Victor was very polite at Lowell, it's been a significant challenge and we've waited months to get permits to hook up our water. I mean, we would be substantially farther ahead where we are now if we had obtained all of those specific permits. But, you know, overall, you know, everything is for the most part on time and we are under budget. And those are the two things that you really try to focus on every day. I think, you know, some of you have had the opportunity to, to both be at the high school and at Lowell and see some of those improvements. And I think we are really providing the next level for our, our students at both of those campuses. So with that, the CSO team would like to introduce to you and kind of, we've talked in, in some general terms of the next round. We're kind of overlapping now our projects, but we have to go ahead and, and get that started so that when we finish phase one, we're ready to be rolling in phase two. So with that, Mr. McNeely, if you were ready to kind of go through some things?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Holt. Thank you, President Burke and Dr. Hanson and the board. We, as Victor and his crew are pushing the projects on through construction, we've now dropped back with our design team to the beginning. Oh, excuse me. Let me just introduce John, John Riggsby is on the, the presentation tonight as well. As we are with our office, as we are dropping back and starting over on Pleasant Run, Grassy Creek and Warren Central, where we're getting the process over to look at those buildings, evaluate what their needs are from a renovation standpoint, from a new construction standpoint, and have taken some lessons learned at Lowell and pulled them over to those projects as well. And then have moved into phase two at Warren Central and working on the north side of the building. So we're going to walk through those three projects now, starting with Pleasant Run. We've got Franklin Road here on the right side of the sheet. And just a lot of pretty straightforward separation of cars and buses, the best that we can. We're creating a new bus lot on the south side and you some of the, seen some of these, so I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. But we are shifting this entrance down from where it is currently down to align it with Orchard down here, just to help with traffic and, and create a cleaner intersection down here. Cleaning up the, the circulation in the front of the school with visitor parking, a new playground here on the backside. And then tying drives back into the existing pavement on the north side. You'll see some areas like this down here. One of the things we went through at Lowell that we've decided we want to continue to push through on the other projects is under, underground detention on our stormwater. So we don't have open basins. So we just want to make sure we're keeping that. There are some times we can't totally avoid it, but so far on these two elementaries, we have. And then we do have the addition down here at the south end of the building where we're taking some classrooms off down here where we bump up against it and creating new ones on the south end. So that's the overall look at just the site, not major drastic changes, except really getting the buses moved off into an area of its own. Just looking briefly at the building, we have the blue area down here is that new addition I just mentioned. We have the new gym that's essentially just like what we did at Lowell. We kind of took the same footprint and brought it over and then matched it into what needed to happen at Grassy, at Pleasant Run here. New corridor here. So the classrooms that are along this side, they get blocked off by that are part of what are getting added back on down here to give them windows to the outside. But then getting new restrooms down here to serve this more public part of the building and other support spaces for this end of the building. The dark colors here are heavy renovation. The, the other areas in classrooms with the orangish color are more of a moderate renovation. And then yellow is light renovation throughout other parts of the building. And we really aren't doing a whole lot with mechanical rooms and kitchen and areas like that of the, some minor work in there. One significant thing that did change for us as we've gone through the project and happened both here and at Grassy Creek is we're doing more work in the office than we originally intended to. As we just met with the principals and looked at some of the needs there, there were several critical needs at that front door environment that just needed to be addressed. So we're taking care of those as a part of the projects as well. So a good chunk of new construction at one end and then touching the rest of the building at various levels of, of new construction. And just to give you a look at the outside of the building, this is looking at from the southwest, basically looking at the new bus area that comes in off of Franklin Road up here. These are the new classrooms right there. And then even just from some of the pictures at Lowell, you can envision some of the gym elements that we're adding here. We're changing, windows aren't the same here, brick patterns aren't the same here because we're, we're working to blend with the existing building. This is new brick as we're looking at it here, but when you swing around to the front, it's the same field brick, the same red glazed brick and the pattern. This band is a ray, red glazed brick pattern running around up here, which also comes up against the art music rooms here on the, the west side. They're all solid red glazed brick. So we're trying to blend the new with the old so that we don't look drastically different. That's one of our goals to just make the, the new additions fit in with what's already there. So that's kind of a quick look at Grassy, Pleasant Run. Any questions that I can answer at this point?
I have a question.
Yes.
What is happening to the current gymnasium now? Is that being turned?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is that going to be like an LGI?
It's being turned. Let me try and back up on my slides here.
Sorry.
Right here, we've got, we've got the, the existing cafeteria and the existing gym are right here. There's a space between the two that's storage and some, there's a mechanical mezzanine above it. We've actually opened this area up and we're pushing the cafeteria. Those are some columns that are getting dropped in so we can open that wall up. So we're expanding the cafeteria all the way over to the gym wall. And then in the old gym, it's being reconfigured as kind of an LGI and a STEM lab area. So it's, it's a, it's got an operable wall through right here. So this whole space can be opened up into one large space or it can be subdivided. So there are cabinets with sinks in, in the STEM area. And so it's, it's a good multipurpose space for the building.
Thank you.
I just have to comment and you did say my two favorite words, which are underwater detention. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, thank you. We, we got that message the first time around. I know in one of our early presentations, that came up as well on these. So we did have some pricing and as always, Skillman's working with the numbers to try and keep everything in balance from a budget standpoint. And it's not the least expensive option, but it's definitely the best option for a school site. So we agree, if, if we can make that happen, we definitely want to make that happen. So we're glad to hear that.
Student safety, especially around an elementary school, just really can't be overemphasized. So I was really happy to do that.
Well, and especially at Pleasant Run, one of the things that, you know, from the very beginning at Pleasant Run that we evaluated probably more than Grassy Creek is the community use of that playground. And just the nature of the, the amount of traffic that we get on the weekends over there and, and above ground drainage just really wasn't going to work there.
As someone who lives in the neighborhood and routinely, when my children were younger, used that playground, I really appreciate that.
David, I have one more question. The, the car rider line still going to go around side of the building where the teachers or the staff park? Is that correct?
Yes.
But then visitors can park in front?
Yeah, but cleaning up the, the east side of the building along Franklin Road and adding visitor parking will really substantially improve the staff parking and the, the car rider.
That flow over there?
Yeah.
And they'll be able to come around, loop around, drop off on the right side of the car, then exit back out onto Franklin.
And again, keeping the buses. Yeah, I think it's extremely important for us, we're moving that exit to align almost as a four-way with the, the stoplight there going across into the neighborhood. I just, we've just seen too many situations and we have too many traffic issues there. So, you know, there's a few priorities at Pleasant Run that, you know, we, we, we started with and, and then we kind of built around it.
Right now, that entrance is right about here. So that, just having those slight misalignments is, makes it, as David just said, it's, it's a tricky situation that can be an opportunity for traffic accidents.
So did we get permission from the city to move the light or?
Not yet. We're, we're working on it.
Not yet. We're, we have a team working on that. Our civil engineers and our traffic designer are both working on that.
The, the issue is in, if we can do it, it's how we, if will the city participate and support and help pay for some of the cost. We've built that actually into our budget because we anticipate us having to do and, and take care of all of that.
And we do have a special consultant on board. They're a civil engineer, but our site civil engineer didn't have a lot of expertise with working with the city on traffic situations. So another additional consultant is brought on just to work on that kind of issue with the city. And they work with them all the time. So they, they talk the same language and they understand each other really well. So it just helps that get accomplished a little quicker and, and with less wrinkles in the, in the process. Before I get off, any other questions about Pleasant Run? All right. Then moving over to Grassy Creek, we've got Prospect on the south side here going across. And the, the building itself is very similar. We've got a slightly different solution on where the addition goes. But these two buildings are essentially the same design from the early, early days. Then similar kindergarten additions were added on back in the, the 2000s. But, but now we're looking at a little bit different location here because of the site layout for the new addition on this building. But again, it's a gym with its, some of its related spaces. And then here we separated again, we've taken a, a, a look at how to separate buses and cars. Got a large area back here for playground that's continuing, but there again, we've worked with detention down in this low area back here so that it's underground and, and down away from the play areas. But again, getting it grasped so that even as, as playground activities spill over, we don't have a wet area down there either. And then we're separating the front area to get buses on one side that can loop around and come back out onto, to Prospect down here on the east end of the site, the east corner. And then we're working with this end down here. You can see there's extra gray along here because there's XL and DCL lanes along the property to get in now. But we, we're working with this alignment. We can't get it all the way down here because this is not all your property. There's a line running right up there. That's the property line. The city has asked if we can align this drive with that. It doesn't really work well with all the configuration, but our engineers are still talking to the city. Similar situation to over at, at Grassy Creek, I mean at Pleasant Run, but not quite as easy to, to solve here. So we're still bringing the new bus, our parent drop-off line, excuse me, in. They will loop around and then drop off. And there are some ways where we actually can bring them up. Depending on how long the line needs to get, we can add a lot of lineal feet to this stacking line to get cars off of Prospect. Then they can circle back around after dropping off and come back out on the Prospect down here. Again, keeping buses and cars as far away from each other as we practically can. So that's the overall look at the site at Grassy Creek. Same colors here with the building additions and renovations, just slightly different treatment. The front door is right here. The addition is, is back here on the, the west side. Excuse me. So we've got a new gym, some new restrooms related to that, a new entrance out to that parking lot here to the north and some other support spaces with a small single fixture restroom for family restroom and, and accessibility and those issues. We're also then looking at a rework of the office as we were over at, at Pleasant Run. And then various renovations, heavy renovations of restrooms and other support spaces that are being kind of reconfigured to really address some of the programmatic needs in the building. But this is the, the gym cafeteria that we were talking about over on Pleasant Run. So we've got the existing cafeteria that's again being pushed up into the wall of the gym. So there's gaining that square footage for seating and it'll be a high volume too. We're pushing it up to the same height, which means we're taking out a mezzanine, a mechanical upper level that's being reconfigured as a part of the renovation in here. And then again, a STEM and multipurpose space taking up about 80% of the gym, infilling with some storage and mechanical in the corner to be able to, to use that as a practical, functional, multipurpose space in the building. There's an operable wall that would open up here. So it could be two spaces or it could be one. And then here we're doing a little more work in the media center, rearranging and opening it up actually so that it can be a fairly open, flexible space for what Christine, the, the principal here wants. And so we're really trying to address some of those needs as well. One little thing here, there's kind of a bump in the room here. There's a computer lab that's underutilized. And one of the desires was to be able to straighten out this line of sight down through here, again, for building security and safety and not lose that ability to kind of monitor. So we have done a modification here to straighten that corridor out a little bit there. So those are the big changes happening here. Again, finishes all through the classrooms, upgrading those and taking care of, of just some of those basic upgrade needs that need to happen in, in these buildings throughout. And just taking a quick look at that, again, a different look with the same kind of footprint on the gym here. We're working with the, kind of the look of the windows here that are over on the other parts of the school, just a little bit bigger, bigger, bringing some daylight in. Grassy Creek has some panels at the windows that have some relief to them. We're picking that up in the brick patterning there. And then the field brick itself again matches the field brick on the rest of the existing building. One of the things we're looking at here is you know, the front entrance has a blue entrance, but it's really not in good shape from a paint standpoint. So we're looking at repainting and someday that may get re-roofed, but we're, we're looking at the blue here to make it a little richer blue. So we're going to redo that front entry as a part of the work. And then the new canopies with our additions will pick that same color up as an accent at the entrances. So that's a, a look at, at Grassy Creek. Any questions here?
I have a question. I apologize. I didn't hear you say this. Is the clinic getting any more room? Is that being expanded at all?
It is. It is.
Okay, thank you, David.
It's, let me think. It's down at this end of the building. I'm trying, the end of the plan. I know we worked a lot of routes through here. Where that's part of the heavy renovation area down here. I know it is over at, at Pleasant Run as well. We're stretching and kind of reconfiguring the waiting area and squaring some walls up so they can get more space in their clinic as well.
We actually have a meeting tomorrow to talk with Christie about some of those areas in the front and re, changing some doors out and reconfiguring maybe the entry into that clinic as well. So.
Okay.
We've, we're a long ways into the design, but we're not finished at Pleasant Run and Grassy Creek. But one of the things at Grassy Creek that you noticed, there's probably a lot more parking and car rider opportunity because as you know, within a quarter of a mile of the school, there are 300 new potential homes being built. So we are building for the future. I mean, we are anticipating growth at this school and we're trying to prepare for that added volume and, and do that now. Even though those homes may not really be in, in full use and kids, you know, with maybe the next three to five years, we're preparing for that now.
Well, this, I get really excited about this part of the presentation because then I have the unique position with my job that I'll be able to see these things in action. So you may get some random tests like I see. Happening and that's kind of neat that I was able to be here kind of at the start of it. So I'm really excited when we visit those schools for, for work and be able to see all these things, you know, just live and, and working. So anticipate those weird random texts.
Absolutely.
I want to make a comment too. I mean, it's amazing looking at these Pleasant Run. My mother was there in the eighties, Dave, and she was a secretary there. I substitute Todd in 88, 89 there. And look at these renovations, what they're going to look like. It's like the old school. I mean, great. It looks like it's going to be amazing.
Yeah, at both of these schools, I mean, we, in our process, I want to reiterate that, you know, the principal really is the driving leader in the conversation. You know, my role is to, you know, really help facilitate. I'm in the meetings, you know, and I just kind of keep things going, you know. But the principal is the one that we allow and take ownership. You know, there is a lot of consistency that we want to build into all of our facilities. But, you know, the staffs and the principals have been, it's, it's a lot of fun. I mean, this is the best part of my day when we have these meetings because, you know, they just see the opportunity to, to, you know, go from good to great.
Anything else with Grassy Creek?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to take you, you know, the board through here after Christmas. Once we get some things really buttoned up at Lowell and finished, and we've got a few weeks to do that. To real, so you'll really see from the last time we were there to now, significant difference. Everything's in, the new portion is done. So, you know, over the next several months, we'll have some opportunities to really show you completion of things. And if you want to go ahead and move to the high school and career center?
Okay. The fun just continues. As we get over here, as Victor's presentation just showed, phase one was all this area wrapping around here. So this shows that final configuration where they started down here in the southeast lot, new bus lot, the, the general purpose practice field up here, a lot of parking reconfiguration there. A lot of the parent drop-off loop with the waiting, parent waiting lot here and all the drop-off pickup we've worked on. So that's well underway as Victor just showed you. The outlined area up here is phase two that we're looking at and we're continuing to budget and work at that. But this is the focus of upgrading the parking areas on both ends of the football stadium. This lot down east of the career center, which is really critical here at this intersection where we're squaring that intersection up to create a true four-way intersection there. I know this is not the most current plan because we've worked, with this big industrial boulevard through the career center, we've worked with turning radiuses and our landscape architect pointed out to me that he's reworked so. We've worked with turning radiuses and our landscape architect pointed out to me that he's reworked some of it because he's got to get semi-turning radiuses through here because they take, want to be able to take semis periodically down through industrial boulevard there. So there's a little bit of tweaking here, but mostly just so they can get those trucks up onto this intersection here. And then it really pulls into the core of the building here where we're changing, of course, because all parent drop off moves over here, all buses are down here. So this is really visitor parking for the high school and just in and out parking for the threshold and other components up in this part of the campus. And then got a blow up of just the center part. There's been a lot of work done on this. And both Steve and Rich have just been greatly helpful in working this, thinking through with us. This is the front door of the high school here. This is the front door of the career center over here. And the materials and the colors here are not totally worked through, but what we're trying to look at here is a plaza kind of development that really ties door one and door 70 together so that they really flow as an element out here. And this, even though it's a drop off lane and drive-through lane, it's more flush pavement. It's lined with seat bollards. You'll see an image in just a little bit of some of those. But it's kind of a more of a pedestrian zone almost than it is a car zone. And then we've worked with the parking count that we need for people coming in here to the threshold. There's that entrance to, I'm sorry, industrial boulevard is up here. This is one of the kitchen entrance down here. So just reworking that whole center core area with a little bit of an access out to the football stadium, even though it's just in a super primary route, it still helps tie the front door over to the stadium there. So those are just a quick overview of the site plans themselves. And I'm just going to kind of go here. We always back up. When we start to step into the building, we have the two major areas of the blue is renovation like on the other plans. And then the reddish color is heavy renovation. We're actually affecting three doors here. We've talked about door one and door 70, but we're also affecting 71, which comes in right down here. As the whole front office area began to develop, a lot of opportunities there started to present themselves to move the clinic from down here because we realized as we're looking at all the new bus activity down here and door 39 on the south end is not a good place to have parents trying to pick their kids up at the wrong time of day. Or if an ambulance does need to come, they would come here currently. We're moving all that activity up here to the front when we back up a shot. So that if parents need to park and come in to get a student, they can come in to this door down here and/or if they need to come to meet with someone in the clinic. So that was an opportunity that really worked itself out well and I'm just going to jump right on into that plan. So here is the front addition. We're putting on basically a whole new front on Warren Central High School here. The administrative offices are over here with principal and one of the assistant principals. We have a reception area, nice reception area right off the secure vestibule, trying to address that, that need to be able to get visitors stopped and brought in and checked into the building. We have a mirror image, secure vestibule on the other side with the cohort offices with deans and academic coaches and another assistant principal over on this side. So they're kind of mirrored. Even though they've got two receptionists now, these are a little more upfront and helping manage the front of the building as well. Then some support offices and conference space behind this. And then the cohort offices are set up with a grade level cohort for all four grades here. And then this is the clinic down here, as I mentioned, where you come in door 71 and that the inside set of doors are locked. So it's like another secure vestibule. Parents or visitors that need to come in here will be kind of held in a small waiting room. Students can come from the inside. And there's a control desk here that manages it with two nurses offices back here near where the students are that are in the clinic. And then this is J Hall, east-west along here, getting a good bit wider. This is the front of the school right now. And the current vestibule bumps out right there. So this is it with the curved entry there. And so we're working to increase the ability for students to flow back and forth through here. Anytime you've got that congestion, you know, it's just difficult to manage that many students. So we're trying to help open that up. And then the opportunity has presented itself to look at where that ramp goes up now. Right now we're replacing that with just a simple stair over here, but these are tiered gathering areas that help make this kind of a more active commons along the corridor from the cohort offices. And then also some glass-fronted breakout collaboration spaces along this area as well. So just a lot more openness right here when you come into the, and it's not like your school isn't already open, but it's the main gallery and main area here. But just trying to continue to allow students to spread out a little bit more and not be packed into tighter areas. So that's the high school or the front office area. Here's the career center office. Again, secure vestibule coming in door 70. Current door 70 is right where the color change happens here. And so we're bumping out this, this blue area here. And then a receptionist inside here that manages people coming into Steve's area and all their offices wrapping around here. The threshold is right where it currently exists. One, there are a number of upgrades, one being the current door into the threshold now is outside the line of security. We pushed what were the outside doors here are pushed in so that visitors can come and go from the threshold without getting into the building. We've also added a couple of small restrooms inside so visitors don't even really have to leave the threshold to go out into the restroom. And then other renovations with culinary labs and connecting the corridor down through the tunnel back over to the high school here. We cut through a large underutilized room here and then repurposed that room for another classroom, a large classroom. And then what's currently room 301 right inside the front door moves back into the old office area here. So those are the big changes at the high school. And I may just go ahead and finish up looking at the aerial view and then we can go back to any questions you've got. This is looking obviously from the north, looking back in. So the current front door is back in here. So here is the new administrative office area. This is the new cohort offices and clinic. And then the front door, door 70 is over here with a new little bit of an addition here, still all one story. But a key thing we want to do as we upgrade and look at the front of the building is try and get the consistent image around the campus as we walk around the building. We've done it with the new vestibules we did on the west side and now here on the north side. Door 14 has kind of been our image reference as far as the look of the canopy and the columns and how that works. Won't be that identical all configuration, but the roof fascia will be coming out with columns like that. Similar thing over at the threshold at a smaller scale or at the career center. And then another one for the door 71 clinic entrance back here. So we're just trying to unify the image of the school and thinking this all the way through eventually on the north, south side. As we get to the 16th street side, door 40 down there, we'll be looking at doing something at a small scale, but similar to bring a similar canopy out around that so that Warren Central's got a new look on all sides pretty much that the public faces. You get a little bit better look at that aerial view with seating bollards that keep cars from straying outside the drive path. But it's not just like a skinny post bollard wrapping around there. They're a little more elegant in their scale. So you can sit on them. You can wait there if you've got a parent coming this direction, waiting outside and then back into the paving of the parking lot here. So those are the big features here and as you can see, we're getting pretty excited about where this is headed. So I'll see what other questions you've got.
Not really a question, but a comment. As someone who has to park in visitor parking at the high school an awful lot, having more places so I am not inevitably stealing someone else's is really quite appreciated.
Cleaning up in lot six, which is the visitor lot and really as we push things over to the west side of the building for parent drop offs. I mean, in front of the building will really truly be visitor parking. And so cleaning up that thoroughfare and really make, you know, from the very beginning, we've talked at Warren Central, we needed to clean up and make it more pedestrian and car friendly. That was a primary focus. And we did that with phase one. Phase two is expanding on that, but also, you know, really one of the main things with safety and security. Moving those areas where people come to visit the school up to the front of the building and controlling people from getting into access to the building was a, you know, our driving force in our design. And, you know, redoing door one and door 70, we've really been working on this probably a year and a half. We're not quite done. You know, Steve Rogers and Rich Sheppler, every week when we have these meetings, you know, there's little tweaks. I mean, it's exciting. You know, this is a, this is like a college campus as big as it is. And we're really trying to go for that type of look, but also really making it efficient and more visitor friendly. It's just not a very friendly campus if you don't know where you're going. And I believe once we're done, it's going to significantly improve that. Another thing that Andy didn't quite show, one of the things that I, you know, from safety and security is one of the things I think about every time we're doing this, is you look in the commons and if you want to go back a couple of slides to kind of right there, one more, go back one. Right there. You'll see in the commons, you'll see above the media center, you'll see heavy renovation. And there is a, in essence, a platform, an overlook that's out there right now. And there is that hallway that is somewhat of a supervision issue. That is all being addressed. That platform is being taken out. So it will actually look and align with directly on the opposite side for the cafeteria main entrance. It'll look the same. We will be able to clean some of that up and we'll still be able to have the ability for administrators to get up there, but students will not have access up there anymore. And that would be a significant improvement. Cleaning up that ramp was, has been a late addition. We're really excited about the opportunity for student collaboration over there, right outside of the cohorts. You know, those little extra initiatives are really providing a lot of excitement over at the high school and career center. Any other questions as we talk about phase two? I know I appreciate your time tonight. I know we've gone a little bit longer. Andy, if you want to kind of go through the schedule real quick?
Yeah, so we'll transition back over to Victor and Victor, jump in here as we're talking too. But this is the Grassy Creek and Pleasant Run schedule. We're looking at completing design in February, going out to bids. And then it'll be going right into the Lowell process and then finishing up in the fall of 2022. So that's the general approach there. And over at the high school, we'll be going out just a little bit later, basically a year later than the last high school bid. So we'll be completing design in July bidding, then jumping right into construction. And that pushes on out to the spring of 2023 for completion of construction. So is there anything else there, Victor, you want to add in as we transition over to the last section?
You covered it well. Thank you, Andy.
So now we would like to kind of transition into kind of a new opportunity. We've been talking about this for a while and Skilman and CSO and our professional partners would like to introduce to you along with Dr. Rogers tonight, some opportunity to work with kids. So Victor, if you'd like to move forward?
Thank you, David. I think I want to start with a story, if you don't mind. Dr. Rogers had contacted our site manager, Gino, and asked for 125 hard hats and said, hey, we want to get students involved on your job site. Well, after our safety, construction safety manager fell out of his chair, Brad and I looked at each other and said, we can do better. We can do better than just provide hard hats. So that started a conversation that we'd like to sort of unveil and review with the board tonight. And that is how we would like to come, we have developed a student engagement program to involve the whole design team and work with Dr. Rogers and his group to do a whole program. And it, I'm going to start with the end in mind here. Our goal here with this program is that when we make our April board meeting presentation, that it won't be Victor or Andy. It will be a group of students, five students that I think Dr. Rogers has already identified. It'll involve our intern, Tanisha Smith, which you're going to meet here in a minute. And you're going to get your construction update from a group of students from, from the career center. In order to get there, we have a whole training education plan that we've talked through. We're, I'll let Dr. Rogers talk about who will be involved, but it's going to begin with an introductory video where we're going to sort of introduce to all the students in the program through a video delivery method. You know, things like the design and the financing and the program and what's driving this project to really introduce them to the whole process and the concept of this building program at the high school. And then we plan to do a series of training modules to engage those students in a little deeper dive into design, into what we do every day as construction managers to really give them a feel for what our industry does. I mean, we are very passionate about workforce development. Our industry needs your students and we really want to give them a chance to not just walk by or just visit the site. We'll be giving some opportunities, but really learn and meet professionals engaged in that, in that industry right now. So Dr. Rogers, do you want to elaborate or talk a little bit about who will be involved?
Yeah, sure. I think that, you know, we've looked at trying to incorporate some of our career programs. Obviously, construction trades and architecture came to mind for us. So we were able to kind of meet with the instructors and get a feel for which kids would be interested in something like this. And we were able to kind of narrow it down to about five students that are really seem excited and really seem engaged in this idea. And so we are going to work with them and work with Skilman and CSO here to work through this for the April board meeting. And then, you know, hopefully as we continue with projects, we can have another group of students kind of, you know, do this as well. So it's, it's not just a one-off scenario. And I think that's a great advantage for our kids to learn from real life. You know, we always stress that the best way to learn is to do it for real. So, you know, that's, that's where we're at right now. And we've got, got the kids selected. We were working on, you know, obviously getting, finalizing it for kickoff here right after, right after the winter break here.
Yeah, I want to add also that we're very passionate about workforce development and providing opportunities for young people in our organization. And one of the two things that we have done and are continuing to do and have involved in your project and that is both mentorship for advanced employees and internship for those students that are still in college but want to get a real life experience. And so I'm going to introduce or going to let them introduce themselves here, David Yancy and Tanisha Smith. Go ahead, David.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Yancy, originally from Northwest Indiana. Now I'm currently a permanent Indianapolis resident. I'm a graduate of Purdue University and I got my master's from Indiana University. I'll be working alongside Victor Lanfair and the CSO team and the rest of the Skilman team on the Warren Township projects. I look forward to it. Also on my previous project, we had a similar student engagement program that I helped implement on that project. And I know the school trustees and the superintendent thought it went very well and they're very pleased of it. I really appreciate you having me on tonight and I look forward to meeting you in person and thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Tanisha Smith. I'm a 2019 graduate of Warren Central High School. At WCHS, I was involved in class act, as a society. And I was also a part of 2018 Women's Basketball State Championship. I'm currently a IEPUI degree in construction management. I recently joined the Skilman team as an intern, working about three to four days on the field and in the office. I help with the Warren projects. On the field, I help with the daily reports. I talk with Mr. Sheppler about any questions or concerns that he have. And I also do punch listing. I report to any problems or speak with the subcontractors and any things that I don't know, I talk to Chris Combs about. So that's pretty much all I do here at Skilman.
As she's looking at, you know, some of the punch lists and some of the areas of renovation, she knows this building. She spent, you know, four years in this building. So it's been a great help and it's been a lot of fun to have her as part of the project.
We, we hope that just their, their youth and their excitement about the project will be contagious with your students and we can attract more Warren Central grads to our industry and hopefully to the Skilman Corporation.
Thank you. I know that was a longer than we normally do presentation. We had a lot to go through tonight, but we'd be happy to answer any other questions about, you know, phase one, where we're going with phase two and then some of the student engagement. Yeah, this has been something, it's been a passion since we started, you know, and how do we do it? And we started having conversations really with the start of COVID. As we came back in the fall and we were in a hybrid and the students were not really getting, in the building trades and some of the other areas, the, the level of engagement that they normally would in a five-day-a-week program. We really started focusing on, okay, how can we use our construction projects to fill that gap? And Dr. Rogers has been great to identify different ways that our kids can get involved. So, you know, we're, we're really excited. So, you know, we're, we're really excited about this. And I, you know, I'm really excited about the April presentation because if we, our goal, it will not be myself and Victor and Andy. It will be our student team and Tanisha and, and them leading the presentation. And I know they're going to do a wonderful job. Thank you again for all your support on this. This is, it's been a lot of fun. And, you know, you guys have been very supportive and patient as we've, as we've gone through this. And, you know, it's a five-year process and we're really only about 16 months of the way, way into it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holten, CSO and Skillman. Thank you all for your time. We really appreciate the update. And making sure, okay, don't see any other questions. So with that, we are going to move on to the Business of Citizens present. Julie, do we have any green cards?
No.
No, we do not. Okay. So we are moving on to action items, beginning with Mr. Russell and calendars.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Last month I brought to you calendars for discussion for the 21, 22, 22, 23, and a preview of 23, 24. Tonight, I'm looking for approval of the 21, 22, and 22, 23 calendar. Those numbers get jumbled up in my head when I try to think too far in advance. But no changes to what was discussed. Again, highlights just universal K-12 parent teacher conference day being the most substantial change there and a change to the, the end of the semester to account for that, at, at the high school to account for that parent teacher conference day with some early release days, replacement of the teacher records day to allow teachers time to enter grades.
Okay, so Terry has made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Julie, can you take a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria.
Yay.
Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm yay. Passed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Russell. We will now move on to Ms. Woods and policy 5631.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I brought to you last month an updated seclusion and restraint policy. As our Warren police updated their SOP, we then needed to update our seclusion restraint policy. Just adding a paragraph on the bottom of that first page that talks about that when the police are in their police role and they will follow their SOP. But when they are not in that role and they're assisting an administrator and, you know, not in that police role, how many times can I say that? That they will then be following our seclusion and restraint policy. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Do we have a motion? Lynn made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria.
Yay.
Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Passed.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mrs. Woods. And now we have Mr. Schroder with several technology policies.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Last month I brought to you changes to four technology policies and the introduction of one new policy on the use of social media. We haven't answered any questions that you might have on that. Otherwise, I just ask for your approval of these policies.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Randy made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle seconded her motion. Okay, so is there any discussion? Not hearing any. Julie, could you call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria.
Yay.
Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay.
So that, so policy 7530.02 passes and now policy 7540. Do you have anything to say on it, Mr. Schroder?
No, not in particular.
Do I have a motion? Lynn made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Randy seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Julie?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
I'm a yay.
Policy 7540 on technology passes. The next policy is policy 7540.02, web accessibility, content, apps, and services. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I think Terry beat you by a second. Would you like a second? Terry made the motion and Gloria seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Julie?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay.
So motion 7540.02 passes unanimously. Not motion, policy, sorry. Next, we have policy 7540.04, staff technology, acceptable use, and safety. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Randy made a motion and Gloria seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay. It passes.
And last but not least for technology, we have policy 7544, a new policy on the use of social media. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Michelle made a motion. Do we have a second? And Lynn seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay. It passes.
And the motion passes. That was policy 7544. Thank you so much, Mr. Schroder. And now we have a few items from Mr. Simkins.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I respectfully ask for your consideration and approval of a proposed compensation increase for our support staff, both hourly and salaried, specifically a 1% raise. That's similar to our teachers is going to be contingent on 100% virtual student funding from the state. Also, as is our want, we are again approving or asking for approval of a loyalty stipend for those support staff who have put in 20 or more loyal years of service in a full-time, in full-time employment in Warren Township. And so I'm happy to also include that this year as well as part of the proposal.
Do we have a motion? Gloria made the motion. Randy, would you like to second? And Randy would like to second. Are there any comments or discussions?
Comment. That's nice that we could do that for the 20 years or more. That's awesome.
Thank you, Michelle. Seeing no one else. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Passes.
Yes, and thank you. With, with the end of the calendar year in sight, I took the liberty of hedging and guessing that this would pass. Without the, before the year would run out, I really wanted to make sure that we publicly acknowledged the 70 employees that have 20 or more years of experience. This is a remarkable testament to some of the loyal service that we have amongst our support staff employees, most of whom live in the community. And if you were to observe any of these workers, I know it's true loyalty, it really is those, those folks who just get up every day and come to work, even on days they don't feel like it, and just get the job done. They do it for them, they do it for their families, they do it for the organization. And so we're very appreciative. And so, yes, let the, let the record show that these are those folks. And now that it's passed, I will direct payroll first thing in the morning to get those, get those stipends to those folks ASAP here in December. So thank you. Also for your consideration and approval is a proposed compensation increase for administrators, both certified and non-certified, specifically $1,000 increase to their base salaries. This too will be contingent on 100% virtual student funding from the state. Along with that, of course, will be, as a proposed, regarding their deferred compensation, specifically their 401A account, a loyalty contribution from their employer, $1,500 for those administrators with five or more years of service, and $1,000 for those administrators with less than five years of experience.
Do we have a motion? Lynn made a motion. Do we have a second? And Randy seconded it. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Julie, could you please call a vote?
Terry. Rachel.
Yay.
Randy. Lynn. Gloria. Michelle.
Yay.
And I'm a yay.
Thank you very much.
And that is the end of our action items. We have no discussion or items as we have a new board that begins next year. And so we will be moving on to closing comments for the last school board meeting of 2020. Michelle, if you would please start.
Again, thank you for everything you guys do, all your hard work that you put in dedication for these kids. Greatly appreciated. You guys are amazing. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Gloria?
I would like to piggyback on what Michelle has said. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work this year in 2020. In spite of all the things that have occurred, you know, we were able to continue on in Warren and doing great outstanding job. We were able to take lemons and make lemonade. So I just want to thank you all for that. I would like to say to David Holt, you know, get some rest, you know, he works so hard, you know, and his body is letting him know. Time for you to take that great relaxation during this holiday period. I would like to thank all my board members for the nice Christmas gifts they have given and the superintendent for giving the nice, I sure appreciate it. Julie, I love these flowers. I can't wait. I didn't have one in my home, so now I have one. So thank you so much for that. And I want to just end with saying, Randy and Lynn, I expect to stay in contact with you and look forward to us to continue to work together even outside of the board. So have a Merry Christmas, everyone, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Gloria. Lynn?
Well, I wish everybody a very nice, safe, wonderful break with your families. And again, I'll try to hold it together here, but you all mean a great deal to me. And I'll always cherish these last four years on this board and the friendships that I've made, as Randy kind of said, lifelong friends. And I look forward to coming back next year and seeing everybody. And as I said, working with the foundation. So thanks again for coming to our meeting tonight.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Randy?
I wanted to thank again the community of the township for the opportunity of the last eight years. It's been a privilege, it's been an honor. You guys truly will be all my friends in 2020. I told Tim that was my last yay, we just come in together. But hey, I'll continue in my heart to give Warren Township all the time. Thank you, man.
Thank you so much, Randy. Julie?
Thank you, Lynn and Randy. And I plan on having lunch with you guys at some point when we can get through this. You are in my heart. Have a wonderful break. Everybody have a wonderful break. Take time with your families and just be thankful for what you have. I know we're past Thanksgiving, but be thankful for everything you have and take a few moments to kiss your kids and love them and tell them how important they are, no matter how old they are, and your parents as well, if they're still. So have a wonderful break.
Thank you, Julie. Terry?
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to really extend out a thank you to the cabinet and to Dr. Hanson and our board for really working on a safer opening plan. It shows our resilience and all of us trying really hard to do the right for our community and for kids. Teachers and administrators, support staff, everyone, thank you for all you do. May you all just have a fabulous vacation or break. Enjoy your family. And like Julie said, just hold those near and dear to you even closer.
Thank you, Terry. And I will close out. I have been meaning to say this for three months now, so I have it written down so I don't get it wrong. The Indiana Foreign Language Teachers Association, Dr. Walter Bart's Distinguished World Language Administrative Administrator Award was given to Mr. Travis Koemer and Ms. Kim Park for their work on and administration of our dual-language immersion program. their work on and administration of our dual-language immersion program at Pleasant Run. And that is no small accomplishment, and I keep forgetting to mention it. So, I wanted to do that because the work that they have done is absolutely amazing. I've had a lot of time to think over the past couple of days about things that are unique to Warren and how we, Ryan even used that word earlier, that phrase earlier tonight, back in July, roughly 10 years ago, we originally proposed going to a hybrid model before the county came in and said we had to. Now, we are once again plowing our own future and making our own determination about student safety and how to have students in school and when and how it is safe. Our J O G program is very unique to us. And I, I had a story a bit about how connected our programs are. So, my son is in culinary arts this semester and he is also in Japanese this semester. And my son, who has cooked a grand total of zero meals before July of this year, now makes Japanese food for lunch every day, every day. And that just really shows how two programs that aren't connected, his culinary arts program has taught him not how to make Japanese food and his Japanese program has certainly not discussed how to cook it, just work together and really do put together these skills. And so, I have a 14, now 15, he's going to get mad if he hears that. He just had a birthday, year-old wandering around, making lunch every day and being self-sufficient and telling me if I need to order something and things like that. And part of that is the resiliency, right? He's now at home, he's got to eat something. And so, he's putting it together and doing it. This year has been incredibly difficult. I don't know anyone who doesn't know someone that has passed away. I, I don't know anyone who has not in some way been personally affected by what's going on. And our students and our teachers and our staff and our administrators, we have all sustained. And so, I am just very grateful and very hopeful for the new year. And so, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we will see you all in 2021. Have a good evening.